Twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four, the time is six oh eight P M. Calling this meeting of the Westport School Committee to order. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands.
Stands one nation.
Indivisible with liberty and justice.
And justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everyone. On March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three, Governor Moore Healy signed into law Chapter Two of the Acts of twenty-twenty-three, which includes a two-year extension of the option for public bodies to hold a room meetings effective immediately. This legislation simply extends the current option for remote meetings through March thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, and does not otherwise affect the ability of public bodies to conduct their meetings remotely through video and or audio conferencing under Chapter Twenty of the Acts of twenty-twenty-one. So first, I'll entertain comments and statements from the public. Okay, I'm not seeing any. Laurie, are there any on your end that you're seeing any comments or hands or anything?
No, I don't see anything.
Yeah.
Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to the informational agenda. We can pass over the superintendent's report for tonight if that's okay with the committee. And we'll go to committee liaison reports. I know I don't have anything from the Audit Committee or the Long-Term Building Committee. I think we already discussed the updates from the Long-Term Building Committee, so I'll defer if any committee members have updates from their respective committees.
I have not been contacted by any committees.
I haven't had any since the last meeting.
No, no additional updates here except for, of course, the continuing continual long-term building issues, but I'm sure we'll discuss that shortly.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving to discussion of moving district offices. So the Select Board met last night, and I was in attendance as well and discussed this with them along with the town administrator. So a concern of the towns that we had that had been brought up after we sent the correspondence following our last meeting was on potential increase to the insurance costs for the building. And I think that there was an expectation that the quote for the insurance, if the district were to move, would have come in by this point, and it has not. So I think that makes it difficult for us to decide that we'll be moving out entirely, because if we're not sure of the cost, then we may not know the impact to either our budget or the town's budget this year or next year. So I think that's a big unknown for us to to act on. There's also a consideration here of timeframe, because, you know, we don't really have the luxury of time here with, but you know, butting up against the beginning of the school year to move all offices over. And the, I think what was also important from the conversation with the Select Board last night was that there may be some flexibility or possibility for assistance with the ninety thousand dollars that we've discussed, that, you know, they brought up a number of warrant articles in the past that were that were part of that building. So there there may be some flexibility there. There, you know, at the at the high end, the town's looking at an increase of one hundred and fourteen thousand in insurance costs, but I know some of those those warrant articles were above that, so, you know, they mentioned that there there may be some potential for assistance with the costs that we're bearing from the building currently. So we can continue to explore that with them. But I think, you know, absent us having a a number from the town or the insurance on what the increase would be in the building if it were vacated, my recommendation, and I'll I'll open it for discussion, is that the district, you know, part of our goal with this was not only to save ninety thousand dollars, but also was to support some of the administrative staff in the in our buildings, and that's a key aspect of this in my mind. So I think what what my recommendation would be is that some student-facing positions would would continue with the move to the new high school, such as our registrar, our curriculum director, our food services director, our special education staff and superintendent's office, and then staying at the building, which this is the majority of the staff. Numbers-wise, this is this makes up the majority, would be the business office, H R, and the out-of-school time program would remain at the building, at least through this year, and the committee can reassess, you know, next year if there's a vote on the building that the town makes or whatever the situation may be, April or through the April election or at at town meeting. So that would be my recommendation. So that allows us to still move over a few staff to our new building, so we, you know, achieve that goal of of giving some support while also, you know, maintaining a presence at the old building with most of the staff staying and, you know, hopefully mitigating any potential increase or impact to our budget in the town's budget this year or next year. So I will open up to the committee for discussion. I know we briefly discussed this at our work session, but given the the, you know, the insurance costs, I think this is something that that we should consider doing as opposed to a full move as originally planned, but I will I will open up for discussion to the committee.
Evan, it's Laurie. I just want to say that Melissa's on the call.
Okay, thank you. Melissa, I see that your hands raised.
Hi, Evan. Thank you, and my apologies for the delay and the technical difficulties. I was, I did watch, I was able to watch the meeting last night, and it's my understanding that it's a it's a possibility that we can stay there and not incur additional costs. And if that's something that we can do, and, you know, again, not incur those additional costs, I think that that would also make the most sense. So I just wanted to share my my thoughts on it.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. And and as I noted, I think that our our initial two goals goals with when we had originally considered the move, given the number that was approved at town meeting was to save ninety thousand in our budget and support our staff. And I think that by staying there, given both the warrant articles that were brought up by the board last night, and also by moving over a few staff members and in keeping the majority there, I think we can still achieve that. Gloria, I see your hands raised.
I agree. I think, you know, the the move is good for some parts of it now. To put a whole big move right now might be, it's a lot on everybody, so this way you can actually, like, it's like putting your foot in the water to see what's going to happen. So I feel like the partial move is fine and, you know, see what the town's going to do on their half of it.
Thank you, Chris.
I thank you, Mr. Chair. So just to follow up a little bit on last night's meeting, I am somewhat disappointed that there is not yet a number attached to the insurance cost, potential insurance cost. There has been some delay in getting that, and hopefully that can be ascertained sooner rather than later. But in terms of of the school department, the school committee's plans at this point, I would also note, I think everyone saw an email from the Westport Federation of Teachers mentioning some concerns with moving in, especially the extended day programs to the buildings. I I am very much of the opinion that moving students facing administrative positions, as has been previously discussed, to the middle high school specifically, is is certainly in the best interest of the the students as well as the the faculty of of the schools there. And I think that that we should certainly proceed with that. I do agree that at this time, it seems like the most prudent course of action is to pursue this this partial move, especially as the time crunch continues to continues to affect these these conversations. So I I'm not sure at this time, Mr. Chair, are you looking for a a motion for for such a such a move, or what's what is your pleasure at this time?
I I I would like to look for a motion, but I just want to make sure every, you know, the committee members have had a chance to weigh in on this before. So I'll just see if there's any further discussion before we do that. I will note one other thing that, you know, a full move at this time, I think, without having information on what the actual cost increase would be from the town side, would be difficult. I think if we're in a, it may be difficult if we're in a position where, you know, the there was a situation where if we stayed, that an increase would have been mitigated. So I wouldn't want to put the district in that position. I think that that's why I'm I'm one of the one of the other reasons I'm recommending this 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 option. But I'll defer if there's any other discussion before we entertain a motion here.
Evan.
Yes.
It's Melissa again. I'm not sure if Christopher is going to make the motion or what the pleasure of the committee is, but I would prefer that the motion have something that we're not going to move as long as it doesn't cost the district additional funds. That's really important that, because that was our whole reason for moving. Well, I mean, it was the the major reason is to save the funds for the school department. So I want to make sure that this isn't going to cost us additional.
Just so I'm clear, when you say additional, do you mean in addition to what we've previously budgeted for that?
So my understanding is.
Does that does that mean the, like, the, in other words, if if the if there was an increase in insurance and and we were somehow you know, made to pay that or or asked to pay that? Is that what you're referring to?
So I, well, actually, both. So one would be that one would be that if one would be that we do not incur any additional fees for above the amount budgeted. So originally, we we were saving ninety thousand. We don't, we no longer have the money to go to pay for utilities, right? So I don't want us to pay more, like, I don't want us to have to pay that ninety thousand now. And that's one. And then, two, if it comes out that we have to pay more for insurance, because for some reason the town didn't inform the insurance company that of what has transpired with that school, that we will not be responsible for paying anything additional. And while it will, you know, it might be difficult to make the move, if we need to make the move, then we need we need to make the move. I mean, I still think that it's plausible to do now. I mean, I I don't think that it's not impossible to do. So I I'm not willing to cost the district extra money to stay there.
No, I.
Are you following that?
Yes, you know, and I agree. I think that that's a big concern. I think my my thought on that is that, you know, that there's a there's a time consideration here, right? I think that the 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 town wouldn't be able to officially decide on whether or not they could, you know, use money from that warrant article to reduce our bill, I think, at least until the next select board meeting. And I'm not sure what the mechanism is for that, if that has to go to FinCom or what it may, what that process looks like. So and that I think the next select board meeting is in three weeks. So I think it it may be difficult planning-wise to to commit to that. And then if we're in a situation in late August where that hasn't happened yet, I'm not sure if we could pull off a, you know, a a full move. So I'm, that's my, that's my only concern there. I think that that, you know, we should certainly pursue that, and I agree that if there is availability within those warrant articles to help reduce our bill, I a hundred percent agree that that's something we should pursue. My concern is just with the with the timeframe piece. I think the the administration may need some direction in a, you know, in a in a shorter timeframe. That's my thoughts there.
Yeah, no, and I I agree with that. At the same time, though, we're looking at moving the business office. We're not going to be moving classrooms, so if for some reason it should happen when our students go back to school, like, if this doesn't hap, let's say they're like, nope, sorry, can't do it. Well, we might have to move over a weekend. We might have to move over like a three-day, like, we might have to move over time the first month that the students are back in school. I mean, we might have to do that, because I don't think that, I don't, I do not want to say that, yes, that we're going to do this, and there's a potential that we could have any impact to our budget. And if that's the case, then I think we need to be prepared to say, okay, we're going to have to move. I don't, I I be, and I I believe in having conversations with Tom, and maybe he can, you know, can say something about that, that he feels that we should be able to still move. I mean, I I'd like to get his sense of it.
Sure, Tom, do you have anything? On that?
Yeah, I mean, we 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 certainly, you know, obviously, you know, we started this with the idea that we we had to, quite honestly. We can definitely rally the troops, Dr. Pacico, if we have to. I'm hoping that we won't have to, but I mean, we'll do whatever we need to do in order to make sure, one, we have as many face-funding people to support our students that we can we can bring over. I don't know if that that answers the question, Dr. Pacico.
It does, Tom. So here's my concern, that we'll say, okay, we're going to wait, we're going to pause, we're not going to move. The town has indicated that they should be able to cover, you know, the excess amount through the the funding that was available. I'm, it might also be possible that they could, you know, by reducing that, some of the utilities. But it is also possible that the insurance company could come back and say, oh, no, it's going to be a lot more expensive, the insurance, because we didn't know that this wasn't a school. And I don't want us to be on the hook for that, because we are occupying the building. So those two things, one, we already said that we're not going to be paying additional funding for staying there. So again, that ninety thousand, and two, if indeed the insurance comes back, which I'm not sure who's following up with the insurance company or not, if they come back and say that it's going to be more, I don't want us to be on the hook.
I will note that from our our conversations with the with, you know, the town administrator, even last night, it was mentioned also that that I think that there is, that the town, from what it seems from those warrant articles, would be able to absorb the cost of the higher end of the increase on the insurance if they needed to. I don't think that, at least from what I gathered last night at the meeting, was that the it wasn't part of the conversation yesterday that the that the school department would be on the hook for for some of that. But, Chris, I see your hands raised.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So just to follow up on Dr. Chico's concerns there, the the situation with the insurance cost, i- if it were such that the town came back and said that we would be on the hook for the insurance cost, I mean, that is, that is just an absolutely unacceptable outcome, and I do not anticipate that being the case, considering that there are, there are warrant articles totaling over two hundred thousand dollars at least that we are aware of that it that have been set aside for utility costs at the old high school through previous years' town meetings. I believe there's actually, I I believe there might even be an additional one in in excess of what was elucidated by the town administrator last night. Also, just to follow up, there was a mention of being able to to use that that funds by by members of the Select Board, being able to use those funds no matter what for the utility costs in general. Now, I I just, I want to be real clear here that there is also, to to me, the the issues here are not just the uncertainty surrounding the cost and still not having figures with those those potential estimates, but also the time crunch. I I will note that a, the Select Board, members of the Select Board also indicated that they may be interested in trying to perhaps move some town offices over sooner rather than later, because it seems that through the the communications with the the insurance company, that even if status quo was to be maintained, the occupancy rate that the insurance company requires would not be met. So so no matter what, even if we did nothing, there would still be an issue with occupancy. To me, that that is an issue that is is frankly on the on the town's responsibility. That that is, that's not, there's no way that can be put upon the 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 school committee as as the cause of of such a such an issue with the insurance. Now, also, the schedule, as far as what's the the next steps are with this building, I I've been in touch with the administrator, Mr. Hardnett, and I believe there's a tentative schedule for a walkthrough with members of the Long-Term Building Committee as well as the Select Board on August the sixth. So that gets us into, you know, that's two weeks from now as it is. So no matter what, there's there's certainly a time crunch, if if anything additional, i- if the a full move was still going to be talked about. So a- again, just to just to circle back, it seems to me that the the best course of action is to to move student-facing administration as planned and keep the the business office and I T and other other positions that that aren't necessarily student-facing in the old high school. But again, just to just to underline, I I share your concern and echo your sentiment, Dr. Pacico, that that the any additional cost to the school budget, school department's budget is 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 a non-starter, as far as I'm concerned, based on this, based on what what's transpired here. So.
Right, I, yeah, thank you, Chris. I I agree with that and agree with you, Melissa, that that's a concern, and we should pursue that and make sure that it doesn't impact our budget negatively. I think the the difficult part about putting the contingency of us getting the or or assuring that we get the ninety thousand from those warrant articles is is, like I said, it's just the the timeframe issue. But, you know, I think we can certainly pursue that and make sure that, you know, that there's not a negative impact on on our on our budget. So I share, I share the concern on that.
Thank you. I appreciate both of you.
And I think that's a continued effort for us, too, on on making sure that we stay on top of it, regardless of what we decide tonight, that we make sure that that if there is funding available to help us in our budget, that we that we pursue that and continue those conversations, because that's, you know, we're always in a difficult position, as I understand the town is also. But, you know, we we're, we're always looking for for funding to to help out with some of these these cost increases that we see. So that's that's certainly a a conversation that we can continue to have and make sure that we stay on top of, because it's very important with that, especially if there is funding available in those more articles that's above what any increase in the insurance would be. Gloria, I see that your hands raised.
Right. A lot of what that both of them said is, you know, we just have to remember, we'll have probably two-thirds to three-quarters of the people already moved in before the next Select Board meeting. So if you decide that we have to move the business and administration out, it's not going to be as bad as moving everybody out, because your the moves have already started. So if they decide, all right, no, we're not going to help you, you're going to be responsible for that, then we can just move everybody out. And it won't be as bad, because you've already made your big moves already, that, right? Because they're already moving now. Are they?
Believe they, I believe that process has started.
So the process has started. So by the time the next Select Board meeting is, probably most of that move is done. So the only thing will be left is your business office, you know, an I T office and Tom's office, that area. So it's not in the after-school program. So either way, it's not going to be like huge moves, because you've already made the huge move. So we we have, you know, it's up to them to say, okay, you guys can stay, then we can say, all right, we'll put you off for another year or whatever. But and if they say, no, you can go, it, you have to go, you know, you have to pay for it, and then we make that move, we come over. It will only be a smaller amount of, it's not like we're moving everybody all at once. So that's that's the plus. And like Melissa said, anything, we're not budgeted for this ninety thousand dollars. So anything over zero is, should be on them. And if they, you know, if they can figure out that, go with that. Let me take my hand down.
Right. Okay, is there any other, is there further discussion from the committee?
I have nothing further than just to agree with what was said. You know, we did this for the reason of saving money for the district, because, you know, we had a pretty major budget shortfall and agreed on this in a way of saving. So it, the hope is that it isn't going to cost us anything additional, because we simply just don't have it. So I think we've been pretty, not only ambitious, but upfront with our thoughts and 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 the move and the save. And if it hasn't been taken care of by other other groups, then, you know, it certainly shouldn't fall on us, because we just simply don't have the have the funds to to absorb it.
Thank you, Ms. Pacico. Gloria?
For anybody who's watching that, you know, this move wasn't what we wanted to do, it's what the town forced us into doing, and we're trying to appease everybody the best that we can within our boundaries, you know, because, you know, some people may not like it, some people may like it. We're just trying to do what's best for the students and best for the school. And that's, you know, that was just one of the concerns that, you know, I heard. So I just wanted to make sure, you know, but it's not, we're doing it to somebody. It's their doing it, you know, their choices. So we're just trying to make the best for everybody.
No, thank you for for raising that, Gloria. I think that's important to to note that the the goal of the of the committee, I think, through all these conversations, has always been to, you know, what, you know, we know that we had to cut X dollars from our budget, and what's a way to do that that has the least impact on our on our students? And that's always been at, I think, the core of of what the intent of the committee has been. And we also realize, I think, that, you know, through our conversations, that you know, there's a, there's a, there's a concern from the town as part of this. There's a, there's additional concerns that we've, you know, I think, tried to to resolve and and work through and work with them on and collaborate. So that's an important part of maintaining that relationship, especially, you know, as we approach, you know, our budget, our budget season and preparing for that. You know, those are some considerations. But in in my, in my mind, based on the the conversation, I think the lack of 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 a concrete figure on what any increase would be, I think it it may be best for the district, as I noted earlier, to remain in the building and only moving over those few positions that are more student-facing, at least for this year. And then, you know, depending on what the town decides and where the committee's at, where our budget's at next year, we can, we can reassess towards the end of the year and have this conversation. But I think for the time being that this may be the best option. And again, as as Melissa raised and as other committee members raised, that we stay on top of it with with the warrant article funding and see if there's any, you know, how we can work with the town on on reducing some of the 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 cost burden on the district, so we help alleviate that issue. So I think that's important to note there. So any further discussion from the committee? Comments, questions? Okay, I don't see any. With that, I will entertain a motion, if there's a motion on this item.
Mr. Chair, I will move.
I just wanted to tell you, you have, under the action agenda, you have act on the district move. So do you want to do it then?
Yeah, we can, we can take that out of order and do that now, if that works for the committee.
Okay.
Out of order.
All right.
Thank you, Sharon.
You're welcome.
Chris?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I will move that the school committee pursue a partial move of student-facing student-facing administrators. Let's see, I'm trying to figure out how exactly we want to word this at this time. I I moved.
Yeah, I mean, we can always, we can, you can take it from the angle of who's staying, too. We can say, you know, business, H R, out of school time.
Yes, I think, I think that's.
I think that the positions that I that I had listed for the move, and I think some of these are already occurring, but would be special education, the superintendent's office, the food services director, registrar and curriculum director are the positions. So that would mean that the majority of the staff, which consists of business, H R, and the out-of-school time program, would remain in the building.
So, Mr. Chair, I will move that the the school committee pursue a a partial move, leaving the business office and the the other departments you just elucidated in the in the building for the remainder of this or this school year.
I will second that.
Okay, a motion has been made and seconded. Do we have any further discussion?
The only discussion I have is, again, just to reiterate, reiterate that that this move will be made at.
will be made at no cost to the district. So I don't, I mean, that us staying will be at no cost to the district.
Right, thank you. Yeah, and I think that, that's, that's, you know, on, on the committee now to, to, I think that the select board is hopefully hearing this week on, on some numbers. I would, I would hope, there's no indication from the insurance on what that would be or when that's coming. But I think at that time, that's important for us to, to have that, you know, continue the conversation about those warrant articles. So thank you for, for raising that. Is there anything further? Okay, hearing none. We are remote, so we will take a roll call vote.
Hi, Gloria Cabral.
Aye, Christopher Thrash.
Aye, Melissa Pacheco.
Aye, Jason Pacheco.
Aye, Evan Gendrow. Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay, next, on our action agenda, we took that out of order. So our other item on our action agenda is review and act on school committee meeting minutes of Tuesday, July 9th, 2024. Is there a motion? I'm making motions out of seven minutes.
I will second.
Okay, a motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Aye, Gloria Cabral.
Aye, Christopher Thrash.
Aye, Melissa Pacheco.
Aye, Jason Pacheco.
Aye, Evan Gendrow. Okay, that carries unanimously. Routine matters, correspondences and notices, I have none. Topics the chair could not reasonably anticipate 48 hours in advance of the meeting, and I have none there as well. With that being said, if there are no further items, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. We'll take a roll call vote.
Aye, Gloria Cabral.
Aye, Christopher Thrash.
Aye, Melissa Pacheco.
Aye, Jason Pacheco.
Aye, Evan Gendrow. That's unanimous. Thank you very much, everyone. This meeting is adjourned.
Have a good night.
Have a good night.